Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. This is a city council meeting on August 21st, 2017, and we'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum. Okay, we have a quorum. Now we'll have the invocation by Scott Wiley, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, I want to say thank you, I'll be a half of all who are gathered here today, and thank you for your many blessings, for life itself, for health, for sustenance, for friendship, for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. And we thank you for the freedom that we have, and for loving us from your abundant gracious nature. Father, you have said in the scriptures that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. So I pray for our mayor, for the levels of city officials, and in particular for this council, and ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid various interests and issues of our city, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a thirst for what is good and right, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray, Father, for this agenda that's set before them, give them assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of Rapid City. In this, we pray in Christ's name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to apply. Stands, one nation, justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now on to the adoption of the agenda. Now's the time where the council can decide to adopt the agenda as presented, or they can make some alterations to it. Is there a motion? Okay, a motion to adopt by Lewis, and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. I'm gonna go down front for a couple of recognitions, and then we'll resume. Well, the first thing I want to do tonight is recognize the mayor's office intern who is leaving us to go back to school here shortly, so Ricky Heartape, if you could come forward, Mayor's Office Intern Program is in its second year, was really started and it's administered by Kelsey Sekos, the mayor's office administrative coordinator, who hides behind the corner there, making sure not to get any recognition. But it's been a very successful program, and something that I doubt we would have started without Ms. Sekos's initiative. Our mayor's office was fortunate enough to have Ricky assisting our office this summer. She was one of many candidates that applied for this second-year internship, and she carried out all of her assigned tasks with a high level of professionalism, and something we appreciate. She assisted our office with historical entry and archiving, and also managed to go on ride-alongs with the fire department, police department, and code enforcement. Next week, Ricky will be returning to Indiana Wesleyan University in Marion, Indiana, where she's scheduled to enter into her third year of college. She's currently seeking a double major in political science and history, and we hope this internship has provided her with a bit of real-world experience that she can apply to the scholastic learning that she is undergoing now. I'm pretty sure after spending some time with us, she wants to be a mayor when she grows up. But we really appreciate your time and energy this year, Ricky. It's been a pleasure to have you here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the mayor's given me an option to speak, so I just want to thank my boyfriend for letting me live with him for a while, and his family for letting me stay there, and I want to thank my family back home, who is allowing themselves to miss me for the whole summer. Thank you.
Now, is Chris Cooper here? Chris Cooper? Okay. Well, I have a proclamation here to read pertaining to Veteran Suicide Awareness Day. Throughout the history of our state and nation, countless brave men and women have served our country with honor, dedication, and personal sacrifice, so that we might enjoy the freedoms that we have today. Whereas, personal sacrifices and militant experiences that our men and women in uniform face at home and abroad can and have been known to result in private battles with depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and traumatic brain injuries. And whereas these private battles lead to feelings of isolation and desperation that have gone untreated, can lead to contemplation of suicide. Whereas veterans, on average, commit suicide at a rate of 22 veterans per day, or one every 65 minutes. And whereas it is important to recognize the warning signs of veteran suicide, and fight for those who have been brave enough to fight for us and our way of life. And whereas a group of local veterans, family members, and friends have organized the annual 22K, for 22 Kill, to be held on September 3rd, in an effort to raise awareness for the grim reality that many veterans struggle with, with the aftermath of war while serving our country, and sometimes suicide becomes their last resort. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim Sunday, September 3rd, 2017, as Veteran Suicide Awareness Day in Rapid City, and urge all citizens to join the fight in raising awareness for our veterans that continue to struggle with a battle that followed them home, and to give them hope on this day and throughout the year. Are there any veterans in the house tonight? Would you please stand? Thank you very much for your service. to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at this meeting on items not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. And we have one speaker request from Eric Hykes.
Eric Hykes, 1115 West Boulevard. I'm 46 years old, I really stopped pulling punches anymore, and I just kinda say what I think. This is gonna be me saying what I think. This is a bit rare, so, not everyone's gonna like it, but I was a big fan of Reagan, even in my younger years. I think he catalyzed a lot of the growth that we saw in Rapid City, got all this cool infrastructure and architecture as a result of it. But a lot of that's aging, and it's time for us to take a hard look at the 30-year policy on the fact that you have to renew stuff after a while, fix it up, and I'm gonna be the minority report that says, "Raise my taxes." Go right ahead. Give me world-class schools and infrastructure that I've been promised. Give me great streets, and keep those parks awesome. Make this a great community that I brag about to my relatives and friends, that I showcase my friends from other cities that say, "Man, this place kicks butt. This is great, we love it here." How do you do that? Sometimes taxes do that, and, you know, I've probably been poor my whole life, and, you know, found a way to pay for stuff, and I think there's a correlation that I see as for the past couple of years after moving into West Boulevard, of the derelict amount of deferred maintenance I see in that area on a lot of those homes. I see the same thing in our infrastructure. I see the same thing in a lot of parts of our community. There might be a correlation to those who don't want to pay their taxes, who don't want to keep their houses, and keep their facilities, and keep their yards and everything else up. So it's time to, you know, think about financing some of these things through, you know, our own pockets, and bucking up and working hard. Just wanted to share that. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Those are all the general public comment speakers we have tonight, and now we'll move on to non-public hearing items, items 3 through 55. There is no public comment on items 3 through 49, no form submitted, so we will forego that, and move on to consent, items 3 through 49. The council like to approve items 3 through 49, or offer items to be pulled from consent? Darla Drew.
Item 38, please.
Okay, are there any others? And can we have a motion to approve all the consent items, with the exception of item 38?
To approve.
Motion by Lorenti, and a second by Solomon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to item 38. Acknowledge the June 2017 sales tax report. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Pauline Sumption a couple of questions, please.
Please do.
You know, I think if anybody went online and actually looked at the sales tax report as I did, they might be a little confused by it, so if you could kinda clarify why we're seeing zeros in many of the months as far as sales tax collections, and, you know, what the, where we're really at with sales tax at this time for June.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
The report that's on, that's linked to the agenda, is always for the full year of activity, and so obviously, I don't have any revenues coming in yet for reporting months of July through December. So if you look at the far right of the spreadsheet, you're gonna see zeros for the last six months. And so the percentage of growth at the bottom is a negative amount, about 50%, somewhere in there, but that's because it's based on the total for the year, not which shows zeros for six of those months. Where you really wanna look is on the left-hand side of the spreadsheet, where it shows both payments that I receive for every month, and then at the bottom of that, it's a year-to-date percent increase. And so for the first six months in 2017 compared to the first six months in 2016, we are at a 1.97, I believe, percent increase for that six-month time period comparison. If you remember last year, when the report came forward, it was, I wanna say, point 63, I wanna say? Or that was in April, maybe, and then it was .97, or .93 last time. But June by itself, ju- just one month this year compared to June last year, was up nearly 6%. So either the tourists were in early, or people are in a better position, I'm not quite sure what the, that large of an increase caused it, but that helped our sales tax at this point of the year to be at 1.97% over last year.
Do you think we're gonna see a bump from the Eclipse traffic?
Considering everybody seems to be going out of town to Nebraska, we'll probably see a decrease, if anything, but it's just one day, thank goodness.
Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom?
Move to acknowledge.
Okay, a second by Chad Lewis. Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, and may I ask a follow-up question of Pauline?
Yes.
So, Pauline, on the June payment, did, is that the one that had actually three payments from the state, and could a part of that sales tax been from May, when we had that international competition for computer programming?
Only if the businesses reported late. This is based on reporting, so they collected the taxes in June. We always received the payments about six months, or six weeks behind up until this point. I'm not quite sure how it's gonna work, now that the state's going to one payment a month versus the two, but, so we would always get it about six weeks behind, so that's why I do it on an accrued basis versus cash, 'cause in the cash basis, it's gonna throw you off like that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Jason Solomon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask a question of Pauline Sumption, please? Pauline, very quick question. Would we be able to know what impact the collection of sales tax by Amazon.com is having on our budget? 'Cause I believe people actually do shop there, from what I hear.
Correct, and in a nutshell, no, we don't, do not know specifically. I will say, I don't think it's going to be as great of an impact as we had hoped, because any third-party vendors that go through Amazon do not collect the sales tax. You have to purchase from Amazon directly, and if you are one that goes to Amazon frequently, most of them are third-party vendors.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay, motion is to acknowledge. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us on to our non-consent items, items 50 through 55, and we have a speaker request form on item number 55, from Cale McNibow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Cale McNibow. I own Spurlock Consulting, and I represent the petitioner in this matter. Little background, this exhibit will show you, in a nutshell, what this exception request has been, is in regards to. What we see in this location is, just a little north is the Menards. This is East Anamosa Street. We're looking at planning this lot. As part of that planning, we're talking about building a 20-inch water main on this side of the road, and a 16-inch water main on this side of the road. The city has a criteria that establishes the maximum length for dead-end water mains. Right now, it starts here at Menards, and that water mains in this location, and terminates at the property line. That's 1,200 feet. We're going to be building this part, which is gonna take it in excess of the 1,200-foot criteria, not significantly in excess, and as you can see, we have 55-foot of frontage to this lot shown in orange, which meets that 1,200-foot criteria. It's right here. So this point is where 1,200 feet stops. Our lot fronts it. So we're talking about an additional, let me clear that. We're talking about an additional 400 feet, and terminating at this point. This water main, the 16-inch, will be dry, will be capped on each end, and the water service to this lot could come off this location, or, and if it comes off that location, it'd actually be within the 1,200-foot criteria limit for the dead-end mains. Now, the ramifications of us having to build an off-site water main per the city's request, to stay in performance with the ordinance, is to build this 1,700 feet of water main in this location, looping it back to North Creek Drive. That's 1,700 feet of water through the bottom of the detention cell. Now, you have to bury water mains six feet deep. That's going to require 25-foot of fill, right here, to achieve that vertical alignment, to be able to place that water main six feet deep. So it will look like that. That's 55,000 yards of dirt. 25 feet of fill, 55,000 yards of dirt, that's extending the man, bringing the manholes up to grade, that's improving the storm sewer that exists on the bottom of this detention. So, the request we're making is to be able to plant this lot, which does not front the Philadelphia Street right away, which would trigger the improvements to this water main. As soon as this lot gets built, you're looking at extending this water main in accordance with the criteria. But we're not up against the Philadelphia Street right away. We're simply building an off-site water main to achieve, 1,700 linear feet of off-site water main, to achieve a loop. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure there'll be some questions when we get to that item here shortly. Okay, that'll end the public comment time on these items, and we'll go to item number 50, under ordinances. First reading ordinance 6190, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Spurlock Consulting for JND LLC for rezoning from General Agricultural District to Light Industrial for property generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of North Plaza Drive and Fountain Plaza Drive, and committee recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Solomon, and a second by Drew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under Community Planning and Development Services, item number 51, a request by D.C. Scott Surveyors, Inc., of Patrick and Amy Rose for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot 23A, 23B, and 23C, of Block 7 of Eastern Acres subdivision, generally described as being located at the east end of Shaw Court, and committee recommendations to approve with stipulations.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Lewis, and seconded by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 52, request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Marcus and Ann Hobrich for a preliminary subdivision plan for lots 1 and 2 of Old Folsom subdivision, generally described as being located at 7756 Old Folsom Road. Recommendation from committee is to approve with stipulations.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Drew, and second by Nordstrom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 53, a request by Richard Sommer for a discount tire for Todd Mosher of R.A. Smith National, Inc., for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot B1 of Menards subdivision, generally described as being located across from Menards and North Creek Drive. Committee recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Lewis, and a second by Modrick. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for the Legal Finance Committee items, 54, we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 54 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the Third Amendment to the ground lease with Lester Hospitality, and sign the ground lease, a stopple certificate, and agreement between the city and Lester Hospitality, Rapid City, and the Great Western Bank. And I would yield to a motion, otherwise I'd like to retain the floor and ask the city attorney a couple of questions.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Drew, and a second by Roberts, and now we'll go to Joel Landine.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there was an extra document added since the Legal and Finance Committee, and I wanted to explain, I know Carla Kushman from my office sent you an email, but after the Legal and Finance Committee, we received a document from Lester Hospitality's banker that they needed signed, and unfortunately, the banker didn't understand our processes or realize that that would be a problem. So, the issue was, the Lesters have scheduled closing on their financing for September 1st, and obviously, we didn't have a meeting again before September 1st. This document is necessary for that closing to proceed. It really is just procedural. We reviewed it, we made sure it was consistent with the extended lease, we have no issue with it. While it's unusual, normally the documents you see and approve go through the committee process, it is not a violation of state law for us to put it on the agenda, it's just unusual compared to our normal processes, but it was included and on the agenda in a timely manner, so it didn't actually violate the law to include it tonight. Based on the fact that they had closing scheduled for September 1st, we were not going to be able to get it on another agenda prior to that date, and the fact that it would potentially harm the Lesters if this did not go through this evening, I made a decision to add it to the agenda, but because you had not reviewed it, that's why this item was moved off the consent calendar and put on the regular agenda.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Amanda Scott? Oh, nope. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to the Public Works Committee items, number 55, we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Appeal of denied exception request from Spurlock Consulting on behalf of Creek Drive LLC to allow the use of dead-end water main longer than 1,200 feet in East Anamosa Street. Recommendation from the Public Works Committee was to approve with a two-to-one vote.
Second?
I'm not making a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Modrick, and was there a second?
I don't.
Second by Lewis, and now we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Dale Teck a couple of questions, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Dale, as the representative of the applicant indicated, if I'm reading this correctly, or understand what was presented, this lot, if he brings down 1,200 feet, he can tie in at that 1,200 feet. Am I reading that right, or am I misunderstanding what is presented?
I believe his point was, is that they could make a service connection to the property within the 1,200 feet that our criteria states, but that's not what the criteria states. It states that the water main must be constructed and be no longer than 1,200 feet of length.
It states that the water main must be constructed and be no longer than 1,200 feet of length. Since he's plating property, he's required to extend the water main, so the total length will be close to 1,600 feet in length that they're proposing.
So, and I'm still just going back to what he drew then, so what he was proposing or what he drew up there, when he showed the water main coming down or the water services coming to that 1,200 feet, that's not adequate? That's not what's being proposed, or that's not what was proposed?
Our criteria simply states you can't have dead-end water mains longer than 1,200 feet. They're plating the property, they're going to extend that water lane roughly another 400 feet. So it's near 1,200 feet already as it is, it'll be close to 1,600 feet when they do their subdivision. So our criteria requires that it be looped then. One of the, probably the only way to loop, as he mentioned, is to build that loop along Philadelphia Street to accomplish that.
And I can understand when he presented, I mean, Philadelphia is another whole lot away. I guess when I streamed this and was watching the public works meeting and he kept circling the 1,200 feet, so let me see if I can ask this more plainly. If he plots that land, or the applicant plots that land, and the water main is extended down to that 1,200 feet, can they extend it just 1,200 feet and tie into it? Or does the water main have to go down the 1,600 feet?
The water main must be extended to the limits of the property he's plating.
Okay. Thank you, because I think that's the piece I was missing, because he kept saying 1,200 feet, and I'm like, there's your answer. Just take it to the 1,200 feet and tie in. So according to our procedures, if, when they plot this land, it has to come down the full length of the frontage of that property.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's the 1,600 feet in there. And so then the only other question I have for you, Dale, is I know, like I said, when I streamed it, I can understand having a lot in between and having to extend it to tie into Philadelphia at this time seems a little excessive when it's not currently being developed all the way down there. But I think in the past, the public works department, maybe not on water things, but they've kind of worked, and I believe at public works, you were asked, is there any type of working together to put money for the funding of that loop in the future or anything else to help contribute for that? Is that a possibility, or is this pretty much all or nothing on the developer side?
In this instance, it'd be all or nothing, because these infrastructure improvements are necessitated by the development, and the development is required to pay for those improvements. So Mr. McNibow, I think accurately represented that when the lot adjacent to Philadelphia Street and Anamosa Street gets platted, then those improvements will be made at that time.
So at this time, our rules require them to tie into that Philadelphia loop, though? There's no other alternative?
The only other alternative would be to try to put a public water main in an easement across private property, and that's not a practical solution.
Yeah, no, that sounds a little yucky, so thank you. As it stands now, I would like to support staff on this, only because I can't work my way around any type of alternative. So with the motion on the floor, I will be voting against it.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I haven't had the sufficient answers that I've been looking for from the developer to satisfy my concerns, so what I'm interested in, if I can address a question for Dale Tech, that language that you were expressing at Public Works, it was pretty strong language, what I was hearing. Have you got that available, or have you got that off the top of your head?
I think I have it off the top of my head, Alderman Nordstrom. The language in our criteria manual says dead-end water mains in excess of 1,200 feet are expressly prohibited. That's pretty strong language that was included in that criteria manual. That criteria was made up of what was called the Council Development Committee, starting back in the mid-2000s. So it was made up of council members, developers, engineers, and city staff. So there was a meeting of minds, and all this criteria was created and adopted from that. So from the language included in the criteria, city staff feels that it is very strong language, and in this instance, city staff did not feel it was appropriate to recommend approval of that exception.
Thank you, Mr. Tech. Two other concerns that I have is the fire suppression, making that full loop over there so we have adequate water supply, and the worst-case scenario would be if a water main line breaks, and then we have difficulties getting adequate water supply to wherever it's needed at that point. So those, so fire suppression and adequate water supply are my major concerns. The other important consideration, I feel, is that I believe I used the word, the water will go dead if the water sits there for a while. It isn't quite stagnant, it gets close to being stagnant, but if you keep it in the water line for a period of time, and that's not a good situation, that's not a healthy situation. So for those reasons, I'm going to oppose this appeal. Thank you, Mayor.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask Mr. McNibow a couple of questions?
Of course.
Dale, if you could, Kale, excuse me, Dale and Kale, I'm kind of confusing myself here. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, it's Kale McNibow.
Sure. Kale, so question for you, how much more is it going to cost to have you tie in this extra 1,700 feet?
Yeah, that's probably about $300,000.
$300,000, and will that kill the project?
Yeah.
Okay. So what would be the plans for that project in the future, then? What would you do with that land?
If a buyer comes along for the next lot over, I guess then they could probably tie these two parcels together, but right now, this thing has a buyer, an industrial use, a person who wants that facility. To go, if we don't plant it, they'll just go somewhere else, and we have no recourse to plant the lot, because it's no value.
Another question for you, because I have a limited timer. What's the current evaluation of that lot? Any idea?
You know, honestly, I don't know.
But it's currently assessed as a vacant lot, correct?
Yeah, it's vacant lot.
And you'd be putting something that's probably worth substantially more?
Yes.
Collecting a little more taxes, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my point would be, we're talking a lot of money here to, it's going to, when the next part is you're going to, when the next part's sold off and develops, you will put the other 1,700 square feet, lineal feet of water.
When the lot adjacent to Philadelphia Street gets platted?
Yeah.
Yes, that infrastructure will have to be built. Philadelphia Street's going to have to be built, and the water, and the sewer, and the drainage.
Okay. So my point is, that is the intention in the future. Right now, you just want to get this property down the line and to keep moving forward and hopefully increase more development in the area.
Yeah, it initially brought forward to plant for that lot, but that customer went away. In the interest of that customer going away, there was no, there's no profit to plating and spending a lot of money on a lot where you don't have a customer for it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. That's why, I guess my point I'm trying to make here, it's pretty obvious that, you know, it's going to get developed, eventually going to be built, but right now, in order to keep them moving forward and keep them, maybe put that other lot in play quicker too, because as soon as, nothing spurs development like other development. And I think it would be, I'm going to support, I'm sorry, I appreciate the staff's input and doing their job, but my job is also hopefully bring my knowledge of this kind of stuff to the table and hopefully help work with the constituents that are trying to increase property revenue, property tax revenue up here without raising your taxes. Thank you.
John Roberts.
You might as well stay there, I got a couple other questions for you. Well, this is, just from my own knowledge, how big of a lot is that? Do you know?
It's approximately three acres.
Three acres? Okay. Can you, Mr. Nordstrom said earlier that they were going to have an issue with fire suppression. Can you tell me what kind of pressure you have? This is a 16-inch line, correct?
Yes, and what, right now, it's a 16-inch low-level line on the other side of the street, and we're going to be building a 20-inch main on our side of the street. It's going to be a future connection. At some point, on the west side of the road, is going to be a 20-inch low-level main, and the 16-inch that we're tying into on the other side of the road's going to become a high-pressure main. So there'll be two different pressure zones happening right on the same street.
Yes.
But we're taking service off a 16-inch main, and that's a tremendous amount of water. We'd be bringing a 16-inch service line into the lot to feed the, you know, the fire suppression, so.
And I believe off of that row there, what is there, two or three other services is all that's on that line, correct?
Yeah, if you look at, you know, the entrance into Menards, the people are taking service off of that, I think there's the carpet store, and there's two other or three other industrial uses.
So there should be plenty of pressure for a fire hydrant on that end, I'm guessing.
Well, I don't know, you know, there's pressure, that pressure there is adequate. You know, the volume of flow is not a problem, because it's a 16-inch main, and there's essentially no users on it, but there's four industrial uses on it right now.
Thank you.
Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Dale a question?
Yes.
So Dale, you gave a quote of expressly prohibited from a council development that happened maybe a decade or longer. Why would committee use the words expressly prohibited on a 1,200-foot?
I wasn't there, but I would speculate that one of the main reasons is, you know, Mr. McNibow just testified, there's all kinds of water in a 16-inch main. Until that main is broken and there's no water in it, and then there's no feed from any other source, there's no water, zero water. If that were to happen and a fire did break out, then the fire department would have to either haul water or lay hoses, and that's why I believe that the language is so strong, is to provide that fire protection in case that water main is not available.
So if it's on fire protection, and that's the reason for it, and, you know, they couldn't see into the future what kind of development was going to be happening in the area that we're talking about, where we've actually got, we actually have a client that wants to come in and build in Rapid City in an area that is part of the infield, because it's already growing out there, this is a good thing, and it was for the suppression, I think I'm going to go two-fold. Where is the closest fire hydrant or water for fire? Because that is such a large development area on the other side of the street.
There'll be water mains roughly every 400 feet along that dead-end main.
So there is access, even if he was to pull this from 1,200, which is, if I remember also on the committee meeting last week, you mentioned it was on the edge, so if he brings it a little farther on the edge into that 400 section so that we can get the build to go, and we can be builder-friendly here in Rapid City, then we've got the water in other locations, 400 feet or so. We're not really dead-end, there's going to be use from that pipe that's going to go over into the industrial development there. And if we go all the way down and loop with the 1,700 feet at $300,000 and lose this build, then we've got nothing happening out there. And the future of Philadelphia, I believe, is if there's builders, it will come, and it's still in future form on Philadelphia. So until Philadelphia is actually a reality, I think this is putting more financial and development pressure on making something happen that's going to just connect it all the way through, and that extra 400 feet, I believe is going to be useful to the industry. And with the other locations that we've got, I feel that maybe expressly prohibited doesn't fit in this particular model, and it could proceed forward with a build, and I'd like us to be builder-friendly and let this go forward. So thank you for that.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kale, please. So with this strong language and Dale's kind of interpretation, it might be perhaps have to do with maybe fire and public safety reasons why this requirement is there. Can you tell me what type of business is going on this lot?
Yeah, I'm not at liberty to divulge the actual individual who's purchasing the lot.
I don't want to know the details.
It's just industrial.
Industrial?
It's just industrial.
Are there things that could be safety-related, that you would need good fire suppression? That's the point I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, what you're going to be looking at is a sprinkler suppressed building anyway.
Right.
Yeah, so it'll, I mean, anytime you're dealing with industrial, there's, I mean, there's a fire hazard risk associated with it, and that's why you, you know, sprinkler buildings of that nature.
Okay. We don't have a representative from the fire department to ask how important that hydrant is in that location, but that's probably the one, you know, one of the big things, if there's a safety reason.
And there will be, as Mr. Tech expressed, there's going to be fire hydrants at a max spacing of 400 feet along this main. So you see a fire hydrant running at the end of this plating. You'll see two fire hydrants out in front of this thing, because at the end of our lot, since we have more than 400 feet of frontage, we'll have a fire hydrant at the end, this end of the lot, and you measure back 400 feet, we've got another fire hydrant right there.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. McNabbie. Could you help me out with that lot that you're referring to? That's owned by one owner, correct?
Yes.
And then that property is still owned by the same owner that goes down Philadelphia Street to, forgive me, I forget the name, is it Eglin, or is it North Creek Drive?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on the west side. East Philadelphia Street connects to North Creek Drive.
Yes, and then that's all one owner, am I correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask you one more question? Because I know on the east side of, I believe, you can clarify this for me, on the east side of Philadelphia, which the water main would go into, or the south side, I mean, of Philadelphia, that's owned by a different owner, isn't it?
Yeah, approximately half of that right away is owned by Mr. Weisler, the other half is owned by two separate individuals, as I understand it. So that would require some easement acquisition to be able to build this 25-foot embankment, which obviously would encroach upon their land.
And I will say, this is one, one thing that kind of sticks in my craw, you might say, but when developers are forced by the city to put in infrastructure that not only benefits them, but benefits the adjoining landowners, I've got a real issue with that. I mean, it's expensive enough the way it is to put in your own infrastructure, and then putting it in for somebody else is kind of, I think, wrong. So, thank you.
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor, that's all I'm jumping in for. Can you clarify the motions, so we all know exactly what we're voting on?
Okay, the motion on the table is for approval of the appeal, so a yes vote would grant the appeal, and a no vote would uphold the denial. Is that clear, or did I make that worse? Okay. All right. Motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Nordstrom. Drew. Scott. Roberts.
Aye.
Drury.
No.
Laurenti.
No.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Five-five vote.
Yeah, I do a lot of waiting up here for you guys to get done talking, so.
Well, there certainly needs to be a process to ensure the infrastructure can be built, and that it won't get passed off to the taxpayers, because that's what we were just talking about in our previous meeting, is expending taxpayer money on private development. It's a bad position to be in, because I feel strongly both ways, believe me. City has rules for a reason, and staff and developers and council people have developed the rules, and if the rules are outdated or need exceptions, then there should be a process for finding that. But to get it to this meeting and rely on 10 or 11 opinions on something like this puts people in a very difficult position. So reluctantly, under all the circumstances, I vote yes. But I believe there needs to be some assurance that that is not going to fall on the taxpayers. And so that's the end of that. Motion passes. Motion passes. Onto public hearing items, items 53, 56 through 60, there are no speaker requests for those items, and so that takes us to, we can take 56 through 60 on consent, if that's the council's wish. Motion to approve by Scott, and a second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and that takes us on to 61, the bill list, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the toll is that which is attached, at
Motion to approve by Solomon and a second by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody want to adjourn? Okay, anybody have a second? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.